Okay, I'd like to call to order the Halifax, uh Halifax, I'm sorry. Silver Lake Regional High School, Silver Lake Regional School Committee meeting March 8th. We are being taped by Erica Deere, thank you very much. And if we could begin tonight by standing and having a moment of silence for the victims and the families and survivors of the Parkland school shooting, please. Okay, have thoughts and prayers go out to all of them. Thank you. Public participation, would anybody like to speak to the committee? Comments? Charlie?
Um, I just wanted to first wish good luck to the girls' basketball team. I think they're playing tonight, not against Bridgewater Rainham, which is a good thing. The game is at Bridgewater Rainham tonight, I believe it's 7:15. So good luck to them. At last month's public hearing concerning the Silver Lake Regional School District budget, I mentioned that based on the information that was available at the time, the town would be facing some difficult decisions concerning fiscal year 2019 budget. Ones that might result in a bunch of very unhappy campers. With the next regional school committee scheduled for tomorrow night, I was writing this last night, I wanted to provide you with an update of the staffs and the budget in Halifax. I do want to understand that I'm writing this personally, not particularly on behalf of Halifax or Slyper, the Halifax Finance Committee, although some of the members of the board in the committee may agree with me. Using the information available to the public, including the revised district budget presented in late February, the Halifax Elementary School budget presented last month, the town is looking at minimal budget increases for fiscal 19 in most areas. The Finance Committee has not made any decisions concerning the budget as it awaits the final budgets from the district school committee and the Halifax Elementary School committee. But if the budgets that were discussed in February by each school committee presented to the town without any changes, here's a scenario that might play out. The town Halifax quick start with its fiscal 18 approved budget. Then, for the line items that departments have requested less money, some of them actually do that once in a while, from fiscal 18, from fiscal 18 will reduce those budgets. We have to adjust the line items that have wages in them for step increases from fiscal 18 to 19, including an estimated amount for the personnel over at the Halifax Elementary School for that. Make adjustments for line items which the town is required to pay the requested amounts, such as debt, retirement, special education, and health insurance. Then make appropriate changes in the expense line items in the enterprise fund accounts. You know, increases and decreases in those accounts won't affect the rest of the budget because any increases or decreases in expenses for things like the water department are offset by road revenue, increases or decreases that match it. So it's a wash and doesn't affect the rest of the budget at all. I've included the changes that are in the Halifax Elementary School budget that were discussed in February, the addition of one vocational education student for $30,000, additional circuit breaker revenue for $26,000, which reduces the special education budget by that amount, and then the sick leave buyback and longevity increases for another $30,000. The town of Halifax is not assuming any increase in local receipts, things like motor vehicle excise taxes, ambulance fees and the like. We're conservative in that, but that's led us in a good way not to overestimate local receipts. We've seen that happen in other communities to their downfall. We're using a governor's budget for the local aid amount, so we're seeing a little bit of increase in chapter summary, a little increase in our unrestricted local aid. And our new growth was a bit lower this year. We're down to $80,000 in property tax revenues from new growth. So we'll put that in along with the two and a half percent increase that we normally can put in with property tax growth. However, Halifax does not use all of its property tax. We don't go and spend up to the levy limit. There are two reasons for doing this. One is, we don't want to place a full absolute burden upon the taxpayers. It's one of the most common complaints we get is the high tax rates in Halifax. But we also want to leave room so that if the accounts we don't have control over, such as special education or health insurance or retirement, increase at a rate that's a sound proportion, we'll have some spare room so that if those increases occur in fiscal 2020, we won't have to decrease other budgets to make room for that. We've been doing that for a number of years. Again, it's been helpful long-term for the financial stability of the town. We've left $300,000 of a levy unspent. Use the Silver Lake school budget that was proposed late February, which was a decrease of $291,000 from the original budget proposed during the first half of the month. As you know, in Halifax, each one percent increase in wages for all employees, the school staff, excepting the special ed staff, because I've already placed those increases into this scenario, all the non-school folks, whether they're union, non-union, elected, that totals about $83,000 for a one percent increase. It's about $35,000 by estimate, the elementary school, that's my estimate, it's not the school's estimate, it's just simply based on the budget numbers I've got available. And then about $48,000 for everyone else. If I follow all those steps, we'll have about $48,000 left for across-the-board wage increases for everybody, school, non-school, you name it, in any increases in any other line items I haven't mentioned. And those could range from establishing a wage budget for our shelter staff, we're running into there, for instance, with the storm that happened most recently, is we don't get the number of volunteers we need to run the shelter. We need to have at least a warming shelter, and we may need in the future to pay people to do, cover that. We may also want to increase the tax title account so that we can more aggressively pursue properties that are in the tax title process. And then also, it could include any expense line item in the Halifax Elementary School budget, aside from most in the special education budget. That $48,000 is very, very thin to cover all that. What $48,000 represents then is maybe a one-half of one percent increase for wages above any steps and longevity and everything else. So it's thin, as I mentioned. It doesn't increase, obviously the 0.5% increase doesn't equal the 2% increase that most employees at Silver Lake are going to get who are here in fiscal 2019. So during the budget discussion in Halifax in late February, the Silver Lake Regional School Committee Chair, Paula Hatch, asked the town not force Silver Lake to stroller an unfair burden in finding a solution to the town's financial situation. Based on the premises listed above, it won't. Even the revised district budget with the $291,000 reduction includes at least a 2% across-the-board wage increase for most of the Silver Lake employees, probably increases in some areas of expenditures that don't fall into the required categories I've mentioned, and it possibly includes physicians, new programs, and new services. None of that will happen in Halifax if steps one through nine are filed. Of course, the Finance Committee might make recommendations that are different than the ones I listed above, Talme might make changes also, but we've reached the point that any increase in a line item is going to require an equal decrease in another line item. And I understand the elementary school will be required to increase wages by 2% for union contracts and other reasons, but that will need to be offset by other, by reductions in the other areas of the elementary school budget. Obviously, all this is subject to change based on your discussions tonight and maybe a vote tonight or at some other point later this month. And then Halifax Elementary School is going to be meeting again in a couple of weeks, one hopes to make decisions on their budget. And those changes, if there are any, will then change the amount of money available for the cross-the-board pay increase for all Halifax employees and any possible increases in expense lines. The Halifax Finance Committee will then make recommendations about the lines, either following the stipulations I've listed above or a different set of premises. But if no changes are made and possibly even if changes are made in the district budget, then the voters in Halifax will need to decide whether the budget for Silver Lake should be given priority over all other budgets in Halifax, including the elementary school budget. And has their right to do so. But if they do decide to do so, it will be all those other departments, including the elementary school, which will be shouldering the budget favor of fiscal 19, not Silver Lake.
Thank you, Charlie. And it was very detailed, as our discussion was the other evening, and you know, I think everybody in the room that night, even now, will appreciate the level of detail that Halifax was able to share with us. Does anyone have any questions or comments on that? No?
I would just like to say, thank you, Charlie, for that analysis, and also, thank you for giving it to us in advance so we could read it before. And it was very interesting reading, and your perspective is appreciated. However, we, I personally look at the inflation rate and determine whether or not things, any reduction below the inflation rate to me is a cut, and we've done a lot of cutting here. And I think Silver Lake School Committee does an outstanding job of keeping everything fiscally conservative as we can. Mind you, we have a balance here between our fiscal conservatism as well as the benefit and needs of our school, and those are not necessarily in the order I just said though. Sometimes they go back and forth. So I would consider every member here makes that decision, and those two things always weigh in at an equal base. But we're all taxpayers too, and we certainly appreciate your perspective. Thank you very much.
Okay, folks, minutes from last month.
I have the minutes from February 27, 2018.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you.
Ms. Close, thank you. I'd like to start this evening by welcoming some of our students to the floor. As I'm sure you've heard in the news, there is an organized effort across all of our country right now by students to form a response to the incident that took place in Parkland, Florida last night. Our students share in wanting to honor the victims of that tragic incident. And so I have some members of Amnesty International here, Caitlin Bean, Christian Irving, and Grace Duner, who are here to share with you a little bit about the student-led response that will be taking place next week. So come right on over here.
Charlie, show over.
We'll put you in the hot seat.
Hello, my name is Grace Duner. I am the president of the Silver Lake Chapter of Amnesty International. Amnesty International is a non-governmental human rights group with over 7 million members worldwide. Our mission is to make sure everyone all around the world is given basic human rights, and we work to protect those rights here and all over the world. One of the focuses of Amnesty is to make sure people's voices are heard and to make sure everyone is able to use their freedom of expression in a peaceful and safe manner, which is what we intend to do with this walkout honoring the victims of the Stoneman Douglas shooting.
All right, I'm just going to explain quickly the actual walkout and what we plan to do. So the plan that the collective club has come up with for the walkout is to have all those that wish to participate to walk out the main entrance at 10 a.m. for 17 minutes, like the rest of the schools who are participating in the walkout throughout the nation. During those 17 minutes, 17 students who have volunteered to make posters honoring each of the victims will be holding the posters. Then at the beginning of each of the 17 minutes, a name of a victim will be read off along with their age, and the rest of the minute being a moment of silence honoring the named victim. At the end of the 17 minutes, everyone will return back to their classes.
So this is our student-led response, and we're pretty much just aiming to honor all the victims in a peaceful manner. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys are welcome to stay, or if you want to scoot out and do so, you may do that as well. So continuing with our student activities here at the high school, next week, we're kicking off our March Mania. And it's been a couple of years now where we haven't had that here at the school, so the Student Council is excited to bring this back. It's a nice way to kind of re-energize everybody. It's a tough time of year between the weather and just the season that it is. So there's different themed days next year, and it will end with a dance at the end of the week, which is a Hollywood theme. Students have the option of dressing up to the theme, or they can just come in a semi-formal attire for the night to gather with their classmates across all four grade levels. That Friday, we will also have an alumni presentation, Tips and Tricks for College. We have several graduates from Silver Lake returning to share with juniors, seniors, and their parents, if they're available, different things to take into consideration when going off to college. Everything from dorm life to applying for financial aid, what to expect the first few months when you're in a new setting, as well as what to do in advance of going off to college, how to connect with people beforehand so that you're not isolated when you first get on campus, and just be able to answer questions for parents and students as well. Yesterday, we celebrated Spread the Word to End the Word Day, which is a national movement hosted by our Best Buddies program. Students here, hundreds of students, took the pledge not to use the R-word, and instead to support, respect, and support for people with physical or mental disabilities. We'll have the banner on display in the front entrance hopefully by the end of this week. Staff members purchased shirts that the students made for us, we all were matching yesterday, everybody wore blue in support of it. And Alex Fraser and Melanie Orca Russo, as well as the Best Buddies Program, did a great job of supporting this program here at the school. So it really strikes a lot of conversations amongst our students about choosing, you know, an appropriate language when speaking to their peers. Tomorrow marks the end of the Bruins pajama drive. Students have been donating pajamas the last nine days to go to families in need. We have, this morning last count, there were over 100 pairs of new pajamas to be donated, anything from newborn size all the way up to teenage sizes. So we're really proud of that. Students can enter into a raffle if they donated an item. Some of the prizes include preseason Bruins tickets. So we wish all of our students good luck with that. Busy week this week. Tomorrow, we also have Mr. Silver Lake, so if you're available tomorrow night at 7, please join us in the auditorium. This is an annual tradition, a talent competition, if you will, slash comedy show. It's an entertaining evening, always well attended by our staff and students. Tonight, our girls' basketball, as we pointed out, is playing against Foxborough at Bridgewater Rainham. T-Boff was about five minutes ago, so I'll be checking my phone every so often to see what the score is, and I'll give you updates. And as we meet right now, parents are in the building for parent conferences this evening. Those take place from 6 to 8 o'clock tonight. So I thank all of our teachers for being on hand tonight to meet with our parents from the community. With your permission, I'm going to table the Alice training to the end of my part, this way we can kind of segue a little bit easier, if that's okay with everyone?
Sure.
Great. I have a field trip request. Ms. Close, one of our art teachers, would like to take her students to the Portland Museum of Art in Portland, Maine on May 11. This would be at no cost to students who have financial need, who would help to free those costs for them.
I make a motion for a field trip.
Second?
I don't, I don't.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. This month, we have several student organizations and staff members who have put together the White Ribbon Campaign, which is to raise awareness for gender violence. And if you came in the front entrance for the meeting today, you may have noticed there was a table set up that the SAD students are manning for the evening. They had a table set up at lunch today as well, and they're encouraging people to take a pledge to end gender violence. It's a month-long awareness and campaign program. Last Thursday, we had a white-out. Today, we all signed the pledge. Next Thursday, we will be selling white ribbons as a fundraiser. The money raised would go towards buying domestic, uh, excuse me, go towards buying toiletries for victims of domestic abuse who may be living in shelters or who are displaced from their homes right now. And then the last month, the last week rather, will culminate with the Clothesline Project, which is a traveling exhibit that usually goes around different institutions and schools in Boston, but we were lucky enough to secure it to come to our school. It'll be here in the large group room for two days, and teachers have an opportunity to sign up to bring their classes to come to that exhibit. And it includes shirts that have been made by victims of domestic violence that show messages of hope. And as they go through the exhibit, there's a soundtrack playing, and there are different sounds that represent how often domestic violence may occur. So it's a nice, it's an eye-opening opportunity for our students to be aware of, and we hope to do our part to try to end domestic violence. And then for the Alice training, I do have a donation request from Balboni Landscape Supply Plymouth, who would like to donate four pallets of favors and retaining wall stone. The total value is $1,589, and our horticulture students would be able to use the donation in their outdoor classroom as a way to teach a new aspect of landscape construction.
One?
Hold on to accept the donation from Balboni.
Second? All those.
Can I suggest also a thank you note?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you.
Okay, and we'll absolutely send a letter of thanks to them. Thank you. All right, we'll scoot over to the Alice training and give you a little synopsis. So we wanted to highlight the Alice training that we've been conducting throughout our schools. Our staff were trained last school year, and they continue to revisit the practices. We've done drills here in our schools. We take faculty meetings and PD days to revisit and take a look at what we can do as a community to keep our students safe continuously. And so Jason and I wanted to share with you a little bit more about Alice. I know it's been presented in the past, but I think in light of everything that's been going on, both in Florida and Kentucky, recent events, I think it's a good refresher, just to see what we're doing. Jason, in a moment, will speak to the drills conducted at the middle school last week, and I can speak more in depth about what we'll be doing here tomorrow for our student training, which we're really looking forward to rolling out, because I think it will really empower our students to be able to respond to a potential threat in our buildings. So our safety and emergency protocols are based on the ALICE model of emergency responses. And ALICE is an acronym. It stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. And so the idea is that we empower anybody in the building who is aware of a threat to alert anybody they can. That could be via 911 call to the police, it could be via social media, email, verbally, whatever it may be. And we'll show a video in a little bit that kind of demonstrates this. But the idea is that we're abandoning the old practice of an administrator getting on the PA system and saying, we are now in a code yellow, and everybody frantically trying to remember, okay, does that mean we lock our doors, we don't lock our doors, do we continue teaching, do we hide in the corner, do we turn off the lights, what do we do? But rather, anybody, not just an administrator, because the reality is that I may not be the first person to see the threat, anybody would have access to be able to alert as many people as possible. And so a teacher, if they were to witness an armed intruder enter the building, they could then get over the PA system and state, there's an armed intruder, he's in a blue shirt, he's by the library. And that immediately triggers everybody who's had this training to respond in a different way. If you're in the vicinity of the library, your response may be to lock down, all right, one of the acronyms here. We're not talking about traditional lockdown, we're not just locking the door and hiding in the corner. We're actually taking everything we possibly can, and we're barricading the door. Because statistics show that when there is a threat, the person will go door to door. If they can't get in, they're moving on to the next location. So you want to make it as hard as possible for that person to enter in. If I'm not by the library, if I'm on the opposite side, if I'm in a shop, for example, and I know, all right, my car's in the lower lot, or I can get out of here, the idea is that that group of students and teachers would be empowered to know that we're leaving this building and we're getting out of here, we're going to get away from the threat. And evacuation is always the ultimate goal. They don't necessarily have, you don't have to go in this order. It's nice that it spells out the name ALICE, but you do not have to go in that order. Informing people of what's going on. You know, if students are in a situation and they're privy to information, let them tweet it, let them post it on Facebook, let them call their parents, you know, get that information out there, because knowledge is powerful. And if we can share that information with everybody in real time, the more we know, the more we can respond. In the event that you are unable to evacuate, or your barricade is passed through, or you're not able to get yourself into a secure location, and you do come into contact with an armed threat, the idea is to empower our students to counter if they need to, you know, so that they feel empowered to take their Chromebook, take their textbook, take a stapler off the desk, whatever it is, and try to distract the attacker that could be in the building. And so I think the video will do a really nice job of highlighting that for you, to see what we're talking about. And these are all things that the middle school has undergone this training already. Our students will get it tomorrow. And again, the ultimate goal is to be able to evacuate and get away from that threat. But this gives them a different means of getting to that point, not just sitting there waiting for something dreadful to happen. Some things that we will review with students, or that they have reviewed already with students, are different ways to do barricades. That will be one of the drills that we do tomorrow, I'll speak to the high school real quick. You know, we'll be doing two drills. One will be an evacuation drill, which is very different from a fire drill. A fire drill, we're getting right outside the building, you know, there's no threat outside, threat is inside the building. For all intents and purposes, it's somewhat contained because we know where that threat is, we know that the firemen are on their way to distinguish those fires, we can line our kids up and take attendance. It's not quite as chaotic. And you know, if there haven't been any school deaths because of a fire for over 50 years, because we rehearse this all the time, you know, from kindergarten until the time they graduate, this is just so part of our response. In evacuation, if there's an armed intruder, it's a little bit different, because the first responders arriving on scene, they may not have all the information. They're not preparing for, oh, it's a fire, there's a fire in the building, I need to go put it out. They know there's a threat, they don't know where it is, they don't know how many people it may be involving. And so the idea is that in evacuation under the ALICE policy, students are leaving the building with their hands up, you know, so they can identify themselves, I'm safe, you know, I'm trying to get out of this building. And they're going further away from the building, because we want to make sure that that threat doesn't follow them outside, that it can be contained with our first responders. So tomorrow, at the high school, we will be practicing an ALICE-style evacuation, where they go further away from the building, and there are rally points. And we'll bring the kids back in, and then our second drill will be a scenario of doing a lockdown, enhanced barricade, if you will. And so students will be in their classrooms, and they will actually lift up chairs and desks and move them as they get to block the different entrances to their location. Although there'll be a one particular class for that drill, our staff the following week will revisit with each of their classes what it would look like in their classroom, because what it looks like in metal fab may be very different from what it looks like in an English classroom. An evacuation or a barricade on the first floor is going to be very different from one on the second floor. So our teachers will take time to reiterate that and go over it with the students next week. And then we also have a survey for our students to fill out, so that we can get some feedback about what their comfort level is with everything, what they want to know more about, what they would like to practice again, and that will help us as we prepare for future drills to just, for it to become more mainstream unfortunately in this day and age. I will share the video, and then I'll turn it over to Jason, so he can touch base with you about the middle school. So this video, just to give you a little bit of background, so Hanover High School was one of the first schools in our area to adopt the ALICE program. And they had a student video production put this together, and they've shared it with their surrounding schools in our communities. So we're starting about two minutes into the video, just to show you the scenarios and the drills that we will be practicing, and we will be reinforcing here with our students. But we're also starting a few minutes in, because unfortunately, the data and statistics that are in the beginning of this film have changed. The numbers unfortunately have continued to go up. So without further ado, I will share this with you.
Today, we would like to introduce a program called ALICE. The acronym ALICE stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, Evacuate. With the proper use of these five proactive strategies, you can save your life or the lives of others. The acronym ALICE may seem like a set of sequential steps for you to follow. However, the ALICE is actually a way for you to remember the important choices you may decide to use in order to stay safe. The decisions you make should be based on each specific situation. Should you find yourself in danger, the information you receive will leave you with three main choices. You may choose to evacuate, go into lockdown, or you may have no choice but to counter the aggressor.
Alert. This refers to the way you learn about the threatening situation and how you communicate the danger to others. Someone may tell you about it, you may receive a cell phone call or text message, an announcement may be made over the PA system, you may even hear gunshots or other sounds indicating an attack.
Okay, so, uh, my mom was on the Democratic side.
Uh, Mr. Hatch, I think there's a gunman in the school.
All right, everybody, remain calm, barricade the door.
Please remember, it's always okay to contact the police department with information, as they are prepared to handle any overflow calls made during an emergency. Lockdown. When a lockdown is initiated, move quickly into a room or area that can be closed off by a door or other barrier. Quickly lock and barricade the door.
Everybody, stay calm, barricade the door.
Time is always an issue for you and the aggressor. If you are able to use a door latch, or set chairs, desk tables, metal fasteners, If you are able to use a door latch, or step chairs, desk tables, metal classroom items against the door edge, the other person will likely move into another area instead of wasting time trying to climb over or move objects in an attempt to get into the room. The aggressor's goal is to do as much harm as possible before the police intervene. Once you have locked and barricaded the door, quickly move to an area out of sight and start forming a plan on how to respond should the aggressor try to get into your area. Inform: Coordinate your actions. Start gathering several items that you can use to protect yourself. Every room has something you can use to distract and defend the aggressor's attack. Communicate the plan with the people around you. Don't wait for the aggressor to get into your safe area before you have a plan of action. The police are trained to respond immediately, but the police are not there to take care of those that are injured or to stop and drag people from the building. The mission is to stop the aggressor from harming others as quickly as possible. Staying informed is extremely important.
My mom, I'm trying to call the boys. Is there an emergency?
Everyone, hi, I'm on the first floor of Hanover High School. A gunman just entered. Can you please hurry? I'm scared.
Adults in the building will attempt to share information through technology whenever possible. If you see or hear something that can help the police, either you or someone in your room should immediately call 911 and give the information to the dispatcher. Counter: Although hiding is one option, do not just lie under your desk or hide in the corner. If there's no way to keep the aggressor out of your room or to evacuate to a safer area, you need to decide the best way to defend yourself. If you decide to counter the aggressor's attack, you may be able to distract the aggressor by putting the aggressor on the defense and maybe even disarming him or her until the police arrive. Stretching techniques such as throwing objects combined with strength and numbers can disrupt the focus of the aggressor. Once on the floor, try to separate the weapon from the attacker, but never pick it up or handle it. You should then have someone call 911 to update the police on the situation. If possible, hold the aggressor down on the ground until the police arrive. Once again, do not pick up the weapon as the police may mistake you as the aggressor. If you are staying in the room, carefully place a trash can or large object over the weapon and guard it until the police arrive. If the person on the floor is still a threat, you may choose to leave the room. Evacuate: The information you receive may indicate that, based on the location of the attacker, evacuating is the safest option.
Hello?
Listen closely. I'm watching the cameras and I can see the gunman on the third floor.
Okay, all right. Guys, the gunman is on the third floor. We gotta get out of the building now.
During a violent attack inside a school building, evacuation should be your primary option, but only if safe to do so. Before evacuating the room or building, place your hands over your head with your nails and fingers visible at all times. Announce your presence by saying, "We are coming out." This will let the police know that you are not a suspect. Move quickly as far away from the building as possible and let an adult know that you are safe. The Alice program is designed to produce a plan of action to greatly increase your chances of survival, increase confidence, reduce fear and anxieties, as well as teach students and employees at the Hanover Public Schools to react with proactive lifesaving strategies.
The Alice.
So as you can see, this is a great, they did a great job creating this video at Hanover High School and we've all adopted it for our own schools, just to kind of highlight and show examples of what to do in each of those different scenarios. Certainly, we can never predict any foolproof plan, but I think this has a lot to empower our students to be able to respond in a way that would increase their chances for survival in the unlikely event that we do have a threat in our building. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Caneta so he can speak a little bit more to the middle school experience and then I think you're next on the agenda anyway.
Good evening, everyone. So as Skill said, we rolled this out to our staff and students when we returned from the February break. Prior to the break, we've worked with our staff. We've kind of done some simulation. We've worked on evacuating. We've worked on barricading. And we've worked with hearing the information real time on the announcements and then making that immediate decision. So from there, when the students returned on Tuesday after the break on February 27th, we brought them down to the auditorium. Myself and our local law enforcement sat down and had a discussion with our students in regards to Alice, what Alice meant. We showed them the video and we were able to answer some questions in regards to what do we do, what do we hear, but it kind of gave them that feeling of, okay, now I know what to do if there ever was an emergency. And one of the things that we wanted to inform the students of was that, yes, we were going over this in our school, but it wasn't just for the schools, you know? A lot of our students are involved in extracurricular activities. A lot of our students go to the mall, to the movies, to the library. So these situations that we discuss, this information that they learned in regards to Alice, this is stuff that they can use every day. So we wanted them to take something so when they left, no matter where they were, they felt comfortable to make a decision if there ever was an emergency. I hope there never is, but you know, if there ever was, then that student can make a decision with the information that they're given to at that moment. So on Thursday, we rolled out our simulation drill. So what we did at 8:00 AM was we informed all of our staff and students that we were about to conduct a drill and then we blocked off an area in the building. And we noted that this was the area that there was an emergency. We informed all the staff and students that there was an armed intruder in our main office. At that point, all of our staff and students needed to make a decision based on the proximity of where the emergency was and where they were currently located to either, as we saw in the video, evacuate from the scene or barricade yourself in the room until you're given more information. Where the proximity of the alleged armed intruder was, the majority of our students did evacuate, but we did have a few classes that barricaded just because they were somewhat close to the main office. This brought some conversation with the students because some of the students were wondering if they did it correctly incorrectly. So we followed up that day with another question and answer with myself and members of our local law enforcement to address those concerns that some of the students had and also to hear some of the feedback from some of our local law enforcement in regards to what they saw. But lastly, to hear some feedback from our students because we wanted to hear from them. What did it feel like? Did you feel as if you were safe? And we received this information. The kids were aware of what the police saw. The police and myself were aware of what the kids felt. And just this constant dialogue, as we explained previously, it's just going to help shape in our school to be a safer place. It's going to help our students feel safe. And we talk about students achieving at the highest levels. In order for students to achieve at the highest levels, they need to feel safe. It's not the best thing that you want to do, but we want our students to feel safe so the moment they walk into our building to the moment they leave, they can take those risks. They can feel as if they're in a safe environment. So I feel as though that we're on the right track. We will continue to have these conversations with our students. We'll continue to have conversations with local law enforcement and we'll do everything we can to ensure that we have the safest building to the best of our ability.
Hi, um, how active, Jason, were the students in the follow-up conversations? I think that was probably a wonderful part of this whole day that you had.
No, that's a great question. So I'll start by saying they were active from the moment that we were addressing Alice and what it meant with the video. When the kids were leaving the auditorium on that Tuesday, the conversation was about, what do we do here? What do we do there? When we rolled out our simulation on Thursday, what we wanted to look for, if you saw in the video, when students evacuate, they put their hands up on their head and they, you know, let people know that, you know, "I'm leaving the building." I would say that almost all of our students did that immediately and they took that video serious. And then when we followed up with questions and answers, a lot of it was somewhat, you know, hypothetical what-ifs and the Officer Marshall and local law enforcement kind of gave them the same answer that every situation is different. So we couldn't give some of the questions that the students were answering a definitive, "This is what you need to do." But a lot of what they were asking was, you know, they'd give a scene. "Should I have done this? Should I have done that?" So, you know, some of the questions were great and others, it brought us back to the table of what we need to do going forward and how we need to continue to have these conversations with the students so they can feel safe. But for the most part, everyone took it serious and I think we took a nice step in the right direction to make our school and our community a safer place.
Wow, that's great to hear. Comments, anybody? Thank you for that. Both of you.
I do have comments for safety, but I figured I'd wait for the safety presentation later because that's.
It's sort of a summary of what.
Yeah, I do as well.
Okay.
So I guess I'll continue because we had some other events other than rolling out Alice at our school. This past Tuesday, we had our annual sixth grade parent orientation. The middle school administration, district coordinators, members of our faculty and staff were on hand. We discussed the middle school with our upcoming students and parents. Later on that evening, our peer leaders gave a tour of the school to the parents, answering any questions or concerns that they have. From our perspective, it's a great opportunity to watch our students take that leadership role and answer the questions from the students' perspective. So I want to thank all of the students who came out and helped us. I want to thank all of the staff who were there and attended. And I also want to thank all of the parents who took their time to come out to the middle school and ask any questions or concerns that they had. Next week is Spirit Week at the middle school. We have a week of dressing up, showing your spirit, coming together and trying to make us a strong community. And we will cap that off with a pep rally on Friday. So Friday afternoon, we'll all come into the auditorium. We'll have some contests. We'll be able to laugh at some of our teachers that feels that they're still athletic. And it's just a good way for all of our students to come together and really feel like a collaborative unit. And from there, we will have our annual March Madness event, which takes place that evening. It's on Friday from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. It's one of our largest events. We have a very strong turnout and it's one that's talked about for months to come. We start off with our annual faculty-first-student basketball game that will start tonight off at 6:00 PM. It's a great opportunity to watch our students come together and root one another on to go against the staff. It's a great opportunity to watch our staff play basketball for the first half of the event and in the second half, we're struggling to get up and down the court, but it's still a great opportunity for all of us to come together. And then from there, we still have some activities for the students. We have like a karaoke machine, a weed dance machine, a photo booth where students can come in with props and have a great time with that. We have a dance in the cafeteria with the DJ and we have a student shootout contest in the gymnasium. So we'll have refreshments and food for the students. The tickets will go on sale next week on Tuesday and those tickets are $15. And we're always looking for any parents or guardians that want to help and volunteer or if they want to come to the gymnasium and just laugh at us as we try to keep up with the students. But this is a great opportunity and it's a good way to see us all come together as a civil rights middle school family. And last but not least, we have our junior district music festival. That's on Saturday, May 5th. Mr. Lay and company, they go off and they compete and we wish all of our students the best of luck with that event.
Thank you. That was great, Jason. Christine.
Thank you. For tonight's financial, I was kind of bringing a few of the items that have got some attention in the past month. Couple of the items I wanted to mention, if you look at page two of financial, the two who want substitute accounts, both the middle school and the high school have gone into deficit. In both cases, we've got long-term subs in place, but there will be a savings in the teaching line. And right now, the savings in the teaching line will cover that deficit. The other item I wanted to mention is on page three of the detail, deficit of homeless transportation for the high school. Unfortunately, there is soaring. The middle school doesn't have quite as much activity as to visit a balance up, but the balance will not be enough to offset what's been happening at the high school. We have had a few changes at the high school with students, but that will continue to grow. And the next item I want to mention is on page four of the detail near the bottom. Under contracted services, it's one of the least that we have for the vehicle that we use for student activities and small athletic teams. The vehicle just had reached the end of its useful life. So we had to engage a new vehicle and the cost of that new vehicle is more than what we had in cover for the year for that. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention because we do have a new vehicle in place now. It is lovely. It looks like it'll do a nice job.
Is that the big white van that's over there? It's parked over there. That's great work.
It's lovely.
Yeah, I noticed it and I said, "Look at that. We get that."
Yeah, just have, that's a pretty new event.
That's great.
That was it for the financial. And the other item I wanted to mention is some scheduling items. We have completed both our, we have completed our audit. The audit's completed for the year. The statements completed at the end of January. Statements have been issued. And I'm looking to schedule the auditors to come in to visit with us. We have that. We also have a bond following company that oversees our OPEP fund. So we have both of those items and we can bring them both in April or both in May or... I just wanted to be mindful if there's anything scheduled that I need to consider before I plan any of that. I have checked with both companies and they have openings on both those days. So we can, for like an evening of presentations, so if you'd like to slip it out.
Let's do that.
Hi, I'm in page with May. From a personal standpoint, I want to be here next month. It's unavoidable. So I would prefer to be here, but life doesn't provoke me, so whatever works for the committee in general.
Makes sense. Face time.
All right. We have that opening, so I would love to know Charlie, we're scheduling a primary meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jill, what do you do?
The first item on my curriculum instructional assessment update is the release of the 2018 History and Social Science Curriculum Frameworks, which is now available for public comment. The survey link is in your packet. Both Melissa Fontaine at the secondary level and Melissa Farrell at the elementary level have been attending webinars and have been working with staff to learn the potential of changes and encouraging them to review the changes and to respond accordingly. Some of the insights to the new frameworks include more infusion of civics, not just as a separate class in US history, but infusion throughout history and social sciences. And also the creation of enduring understandings, which is a great starting point for people to create the backward design approach curriculum, which is the way in which the state has asked us to design our curriculum, where you start with the end in mind with an engaging problem or question and then you design your curriculum around the end result, which is what is most important for students to know and be able to do. And that's the process of backwards design. And the new frameworks include enduring understanding so that it takes some of that extra work that other departments have had to do in the past of creating their own. So that lends itself to a smoother transition with the departments who have not already done that. The curriculum coordinates have been meeting with me and middle school administration to discuss the current middle school placement process for English, language, arts, and math and thinking about ways to incorporate some of the assessments that are already in place at the middle school, I'm sorry, at the elementary level to help with the benchmarking and status and interventions, but also to help inform potential placement at the middle school level as well. And those talks are ongoing, but that in part has to do with some of the programs that were purchased prior to my arrival, such as STAR, which is one of the assessments that they're looking at some of that data as well. The administrators completed their growth mindset course and each school team was able to create an action plan to implement a variety of growth mindset strategies in their schools at the conclusion of that course. The Professional Development Council finalized its 2017-2018 professional development schedule and you should have a three-page electronic version of that updated schedule for your review. Mr. Ziole reported to the wellness committee that all elementary schools now have a breakfast program in place and he reported that Kingston Elementary is averaging about 35 students a day, which is very good. It's new to the university. The Department of Education offered a webinar with guidance on the Every Student Succeeds Act foster care guidance with a real focus on schools working with the Department of Children and Families to provide educational stability for students in foster care. And so that's about communicating in terms of what would be the best placement for the child, in terms of how far away their placement may be from their school origin versus maintaining stability for the child if in fact it isn't too far away. Because creating some type of continuity is very important for children, especially under those circumstances. Thank you to Heather Bates and Ashley Ferrara for their invitation to a quid pro quo time. I have provided you with their brief synopsis, but it was a really entertaining and wonderful production and I know that the students enjoyed it as well. And there was, I had the benefit of seeing the first ending compared to the second ending because I didn't want to be late and they did multiple shows. And they altered some of the... Some improv. Some improv was taking place and it was really delightful to see their talent on the stage. So thank you for that. Faculty and staff participated in their second professional day, professional development day of the year on February 16th. The keynote presentation was growth mindset, eight ways to developing social emotional skills. A special thank you to the staff who presented social emotional as well as wellness workshops, including Jenny Lynn Berry, Rick, and I apologize if I mispronounced some of his last names, so I'm hoping. Rick Boyres, Jessica Cahill, Hannah Close, Jess Drew, Michelle Klein, Christine Markalini, Bill McStowe, Kim Orcott, Uvi Pierce, Tony P. Bill McStowe, Kim Orcott, Uvi Pierce, Toni Pena, Linda Redden, Cara Rooney, Donna Treska, and Vicki Wright. So they were all of our staff presenters who helped with the day, and we appreciate their efforts and their willingness to lend their expertise. Thank you to Melissa Farrell, Steve Pello, and Dave Murphy. We, as, working with the principals, we began talking about the process and the protocols for MCAS testing, especially as we move to computer-based testing in all of our schools eventually, and the need for communication, collaboration, and continuity in terms of what our expectations are. And so working with Melissa, Steve, and Dave, we've put together two protocols, one for elementary and one for secondary, for the principals to provide us with feedback on to make sure that the rollout of our testing goes as smooth as possible. And those are my main points for tonight.
Do you have any questions for me? Any questions? Thank you as always.
Thank you.
So you have, in your packets this evening, a listing of the tier one cuts that were voted on, I think it was just a week ago.
We could go Tuesday.
We could go Tuesday. And it looks like this. And I think where we would think we'd want to put this would be in section seven. I think your audience may have this also. So these were the cuts that were voted at our last meeting, and a total of $291,257. Christine and I both agree with the numbers and the votes. Hopefully, you're memory and agrees with these also. And then also what Christine did was she put together a version two of the budget, which again, if you wanted to keep under section seven in your packet, along with the draft fiscal 2019 assessments based on this new number. So those are new information based on what has been voted and decided on our budget. I had, I wanted to, if it's okay, talk a little bit about some other ideas with the budget and just some thoughts, if it's all right to share those. We talked a little bit last week, I don't know if this was, about some different ideas on the budget. I just wanted to bring up a couple of other thoughts that I've had, and I just wanted to mention them. I've been really struggling trying to come up with any other sort of creative ideas in terms of some fundraising. One of the things I talked about with Elliot is that, remember, we have that agreement with Pembroke. Currently, we have an April 1 deadline for those acceptances. Whether or not it would be possible to try to move up the due date for applications to March 1, so that maybe we would have that information a little bit ahead of time, so that we might be able to make use of that as we're planning the budget. That is something that would take some time. It would change our application packet, which would have to be approved by the state, but it was, again, a potential future idea that maybe would be helpful. Another idea is...
Can I just ask if that revenue source has to go into E&amp;D or is that actually going to our budget?
No, well, it's actually subtracted out in the assessment.
The revenues from CTE students coming from Pembroke, that is a funding source for our budget. So when I calculate our budget, I take the total budget, and I reduce by those revenue ones that we can quantify.
It doesn't go into E&amp;D.
Doesn't have to go into another revenue source. Thank you.
Another idea that we have successfully done in DENIT is we've actually gone paperless on the school committee. It's actually worked. I don't know if it would work here or not.
If John Creed was here.
If John Creed was, it definitely would. And I honestly don't know if the committee is interested. It's not going to make a huge difference, but again, it's sort of a statement on trying to be proactive and to be cost-effective, even though Eric just got his new notebook all set up. He's so proud of his binder. It's a great-looking binder.
You have to be a print-it-yourself, you know?
Well, keep in mind, I do build software to eliminate paperwork, so I should be on board with this.
And again, I'm not, it's just a thought. We don't need to make any decisions this evening. I know in DENIT, they asked to do it and to try it, and I wasn't sure if it would work. I admit, I still have the paper, but I sort of keep the final copy for our office. But we have Chromebooks available, and they use the Chromebooks at the meetings, and they send it out ahead of time. We always send it out anyway. And so actually, the only thing that's printed out are executive minutes, because we would never send them electronically. And generally, we do print out an agenda, just so if you wanted to refer to anything. If you wanted to think about it, again, don't need to make any decision this evening, but it's just sort of food for thought. We go through an astounding amount of paper in my office. I mean, truly astounding. I've worked with all the unions. Most of them have been cooperative, trying to go paperless with the contracts. Silver Lake was very kind. I think we only printed out 20 contracts instead of a couple hundred. You know, all those things really do add up in terms of, you know, where and where on our copiers, where, you know, actual paper used. So again, just food for thought is to try to be more conscious of that I'm really working with myself. Another thing that we did, and this happened actually during vacation week, but didn't have an opportunity to discuss it in February, was we met with Maureen Gothan, who is the director of the PAC Collaborative, Maureen Grable and myself. All the surrounding districts are all really struggling with the numbers of students for out-of-district placements. And Maureen is our collaborator, and she said, you know, she's our resource for us. So Maureen came in with her partner Deb Booth, who works with her, and then Maureen Grable and I, we sat down and we did some problem solving. One of the things that came up is, as a member of the PAC, PAC is the only collaborative that does not give a reduced rate towards member districts. All other collaboratives give a reduced rate towards member districts. So she had said that that was something that she would be willing to bring back to her board. So I don't know if that is something the board would be interested in, but I did want to let you know that it is something that, you know, we had the discussion and would hopefully provide some additional cost savings. You know, it's something that she certainly felt was appropriate, and again, was the only flower that didn't do that. It would help, not necessarily Silver Lake, but would provide some cost savings to the elementary, which would help the towns, which would help Silver Lake. So that's another piece. This afternoon, at a little past 4:00, I got a call from our secretary, from Michaela, and we had two changes in staff today. And one of them is a secretary who is retiring, and another one is a secretary who is moving to another district. It is not a huge savings. Each one will save about $4,000 between being at the top step, the secretary, to an entrance secretary. So we could reduce the budget by $8,000. That is two actual placements. So that would be something that I would recommend doing, that is a real savings. The other thing is, we have looked at our phones. As you know, we've been really struggling trying to get rid of the faxes and which line do we have to keep them. We're still in process, but we believe we could reduce the phone bill by $5,000 safely. Again, hopefully, the savings would be a little closer to $10,000. We aren't there yet. I'm really uncomfortable because our budgets are so incredibly tight of going too far down, but I do believe we could reduce our phone bill by $5,000. The other thing is for our office, we talked about it briefly last week, was we have a .6 bookkeeper who retired on February 28th. That position pays $28,000. With our new accounting software, we have recognized some savings in terms of the amount of time it takes for us to do some of the things we do. Of the $28,000 cost for the position, if we were to replace it, $14,000 of that is paid by Silver Lake. The other $14,000, because it's a shared cost position, is split between the elementary towns. So if Silver Lake was supportive of doing that, we would then hold a shared cost meeting, and I would just hold it separately with the elementaries. We wouldn't need to recompete all of us together and to see if they're interested. All three of the towns are definitely interested in the elementaries reducing budgets, so I would anticipate they would be supportive of that. Again, it would be overall a reduction of $28,000 split among four different entities. The other thing that we can talk about is, of the new positions, if we wanted to consider any of the replacement positions for the four retirements, if we had to prioritize one of them in terms of not bringing it forward, it would be the .5 Adjustment Counselor at the middle school. I've had conversations with Jim Upeel. Jim, by the way, is in Florida, which is where I really should be, but we won't go into details, with the NASA trip.
Oh, he is.
Yes. By the way, if you hadn't, I apologize. I shouldn't have set that up ahead. But Jason's doing a fine job. But the .5 Adjustment Counselor, we believe we can bring those programs in and still be able to provide the support. It would be a better position if we had it, but we will believe we'll be okay if we can do that. We think we can sort of move staff around to provide some of that additional coverage. You know, right now, we are really trying to focus on providing the supports for our students. That's why we wanted the position. But of the new replacement positions, if there was one that we weren't going to bring in, that would be the one position.
I'm going to overwork to the committee. Mar.
Joey, you can still run BURB.
The BURB program would be here at the high school, and that will be run by an Adjustment Counselor here.
What? Is there a but?
No but.
Is there a but?
Yeah, like, was there anything after that statement?
Me personally?
Yeah, I didn't know.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, no, that was pretty much it. I mean, the only, you know, we've been searching. As I said, I know we came up with a number everybody was comfortable with. I just wanted to let you know, I still have been thinking, you know, I've been trying to recognize the town's positions, but provide the best education possible for our kids. Again, the $8,000 are clean cuts. It's just two retirements. We can reduce by that. The phones is the $5,000. And again, I didn't want anyone to feel like my office, our administrative shared cost is sacrosanct, I think would be the proper word. You know, we do have a situation right now where we have a retirement that means we don't have to pay unemployment. The person had been responsible for Halifax and Plington Lawrence, but we believe we can readjust duties within our other staff.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, I think last time we talked a little bit about the new accounting system.
Yes.
Sort of allowing some wiggle room here. You know, I don't want to put any additional burden, if you will, you know, for you to have to, you know, you, Christine, to you have to assume a more of a bookkeeping role as well as the...
The new accounting system has created some efficiencies that one will have to manage our way through this.
Okay. I like that response. We need to jump into this. That was well put. Mar.
You touched on phones, but I didn't hear the part about that cell phone plan that we were talking about, saving some money and stipending and stuff.
We're still working our way through the cell phones and stipends. This is strictly the phone bill.
Yeah, I understand.
And part of our problem is, we want to make sure that we're making a good decision, and anything that is on the phone, if we stipend them for a personal phone, if there's something that, as you see or text or whatever, that person's full phone would then...
Public.
Public domain. So it gets into interesting areas that I'm not 100% sure I'm comfortable with yet.
Okay. I just quoted $1,500 last month for a phone, cell phones that we provide, which I think are redundant because people are carrying their phones for that purpose.
Exactly, but it's going to be an interesting conversation. Do you have two with you?
And so I'm just revisiting the amount on the budget that we had last month for the .5 Adjustment Counselor.
Yes.
So that would be a savings of $30,512. I just want to say thank you for sort of coming back with those. You know, I don't think we asked for that. We actually, you know, I think the committee sort of stopped last time at a certain point, and, you know, I want to respect that you're bringing these back to us, and so you must feel like they are reasonable things to put on the table. So thank you for that.
Thanks. I, you know, again, I feel like what I want is the best education possible for students, and I want everything that was in the first budget.
No, well...
Yeah, I really do. That's, you know, we worked really hard. We tried to bring forward a fair budget. You know, that is what I want. But at the same point in time, I've worked very hard to respect the positions of the towns and to remain with open communication and to be very transparent. I have nothing else that I can come up with. And honestly, I mean, look at me, I'm exhausted. There is nothing I can come up with, truly. So the only thing left, again, is, these are the only areas that I could see as possibilities. I'm not, it's not that I'm recommending them, although I would recommend we could do the $13,000, the $8,000 retirement movement, and the $5,000 phones. Those are clean. The other two, if we were to look at positions, those would be the only ones that I would consider, please know I'm not recommending them, but if we had to make a pick, you know, that those would be the areas I would consider. Again, we're not having anybody lose a job. No one's losing a job. Okay? That's really important to me. These are two opportunities that if we had to.
So I have a question about the Adjustment Counselor. So to me, that's a pretty important position over there in the middle school, and, you know, obviously, one of the issues that we're dealing with even more so now than we have before is safety in the schools. And it's not just guns, it's also mental health. So, and a lot of times, it's the kids who are, the intruders are usually the kids who are picked on or having issues in school, and they're going back. So I think we need to think really carefully before we cut an Adjustment Counselor from a middle school where the kids are the, in my opinion, probably in one of the most vulnerable stages of their education. So I think we should seriously think about this and not just think, oh, we're not replacing a person, no one's being injured or damaged, but are we?
I agree, Eric. I think that's a, that is not a safe place for us to be cutting or considering. And I'm a little upset, very upset, that all these items came up without me knowing, or I don't know if anyone else on the committee, except for Paul, might have been aware of it. One of the things that we do try to alert each other on during, between month to month, is possibilities of these types of things. You know, what happened to no surprises to the administration or to the school committee? And I'm quite surprised at this, especially since I spoke to the superintendent today. And I think it's great that you're trying to please everybody, but...
I don't know that there are surprises, you know, the two secretaries...
That was 4 o'clock today.
Yeah, I mean, that was real time.
The phones have been talked about.
The bookkeeper was in last week's.
Yeah.
It was, and it sort of got rushed through at the end.
Yes, it was. Because nobody wanted to continue the conversation, if you remember.
Yeah. So I don't know that, if you feel they were not...
I do feel that way. Maybe it's just my opinion.
Yeah, point taken.
Thank you.
From your side.
Jason, can you tell us what the mental health staff looks like at the middle school right now?
Right now, we have a guidance counselor, a psychologist, and an adjustment counselor full-time.
Jason.
I just think with the video and presentation we got from both of our principals on the ALIS training, that Adjustment Counselors are a perfect counterweight to that type of training. And it's not just dealing with the kids who might be the aggressors, it also deals with some of the post-traumatic stress that a lot of students feel, because they're internalizing a lot of what's going on around the country, as evidenced by our high school students running on the scene international tonight. I just couldn't imagine us making this cut. I mean, it would be the last straw, in my opinion, that we would go down this mental health area. The fact that we're not discussing adding full-time school resource officers to both buildings is actually surprising to me in light of what's going on in the country. Officer Marshall is here full-time, isn't he? How many hours do we have?
.5. It's paid for by the town, Kingston.
So we get $20,000 a grand.
Yeah.
And that's between the two schools.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, since we're on the subject, I was going to bring this up later, and I'm glad our finance committee is here, because obviously, safety is on the mind of a lot of people in all of our districts, but... in, in all of our districts, but, um, speaking on behalf of Kingston, it's a very, very hot topic. You know, there's a lot of ways that we can deal with it. One of the things that I, my first thought was, we need a police officer full-time at, you know, for KDSK, I ask at least one, maybe two, and we should have a full-time one here in our buildings, but that may be jumping the gun, too. I'm not really sure. But I can tell you that the fire department is looking at, um, they're getting professional training and consulting to guide them through the process of how they are to deal with an event like what we're discussing. I firmly believe that, and I was gonna mention this at our school committee meeting on Monday, that we should look at bringing in some consultants who can deal with school safety, and really give us a, an expert outside opinion, not us evaluating ourselves, but having an expert outside opinion to take a look at our schools, and why not do it at all four districts if we can? I mean, I know that's, the budgets are awful, but I'm telling you right now, parents, in Kingston, they're talking about basically building a moat around the school, and money's no object.
Totally not, honey.
Right. But I do think that we need to do something, and maybe even look at, you know, trying to partner up with, with Plymouth Ducksbury, Pembroke, anybody else, to try to have some economy of scale, to have an expert come in and do an evaluation, give us expert opinions. I don't know how to put that into our budget. I don't know whether, you know, obviously, we're at the end of the, the budget cycle. I have no idea what it would cost. I know what the fire department is paying for their training, and it's not that much. So, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Again, as a Kingston resident, I thought maybe you were going here, but all these security events are costing money to prepare for, to, to gear up, and to investigate more incidents that are taking place, probably because of what's going on in the country. And the town of Kingston, because of the location of the school, of course, is absorbing a lot of those expenses. I'm not advocating that, you know, Kingston sends over like a bill and play that game, but I think that, that a budget needs to have some contingencies for these securities, and, and I was gonna support the $13,000 reduction with the two last-minute items that had come in to do that, but maybe it'd be better to take that $13,000 and either focus it at increasing our resource officers' presence or security issues that you might wanna focus on versus go ahead and take it off the budget.
Do you have a comment to make, Gordon?
Yes. I was just wondering if, if the three police chiefs, the three fire chiefs are still meeting with superintendent and administration at some regular period?
Every month.
Go right ahead, and then I can make a comment as well.
So Alice is done through the police department, so it is part of their protocols as well, working with the school. I don't want everybody to think the school is doing this on their own, okay? Thank you.
And the fire department. Well, they have their own, police are stepping over, going after the intruder, and the fire department, they're going after the patient.
Yeah, exactly. I just want people to understand it's not just Silver Lake doing this all on itself.
So...
Go, go ahead, Mike.
I just, my comments real quick. If we're gonna do this drill, I'd like to caution you guys to, at least to emphasize to the students that when we do the barricading, we try not to spend the $13,000 on repairing glass windows.
We did tell our teachers that their sort of orientation for the student training, we're not in an actual threat, so we can take our time with the barricading, because we certainly do not want to damage any of the...
And we've trained our, our staff first, so ultimately, if there ever was a situation, they would be looking at our staff for the first line of, what do we do, so?
How aggressive they approach this, though, could be...
Real life, it doesn't matter, but purpose of material, take it back, and now they're in the action.
Through the meetings with the fire and police chiefs, do they have any noticed deficiencies in our safety protocol? And if we haven't asked the question, maybe that's the first step. Eric, if the police chief don't see a problem, is there really one that we wanna sort of overstep and go beyond and, and become sort of maybe hypersensitive to in this environment right now, or maximum? Because they're the experts, quite frankly, and our local experts, they say, hey, your school's a lockdown, or your school's a...
They're not experts.
Well, they want to come here when we have an emergency, so wouldn't they be...
They haven't dealt with it. That's the problem.
Fair enough.
I've spoken to the fire chief.
Somebody's a fire chief, be more police, in terms of home security, for, you know, commercial and enterprise security.
Jason?
Just to respond, you know, Daniel from Kingston, who talked about the windows being broken. As of 2017 FBI database, no classroom that's been properly barricaded has ever been breached during a school shooting.
So we, we just made a lot of comments here. The, the one comment I would make is, I think this is obviously an extremely important topic, and how we, as a group, approach this, I think should be thoughtful, and thoughtful, timely, and, you know, well-coordinated. Do we want to act on something tonight? Do we want to put this on the safer subcommittee's agenda? Is this a completely new topic? We wanna keep it under new business? Where do we wanna go with this? Because we've, you know, we're talking consultant, we're talking a bunch of different things here, and I, my personal feeling is, I think we need to look at it a little bit more, find out if the committee agrees, what is the benefit of consulting, what kind of options do we have, et cetera? Where do we wanna go with this, is what I'm asking you folks. You wanna do anything with this tonight? Do you wanna put this back up next month?
Just an idea.
I'm open to it.
So, um, the idea may be holding that $13,000 either for consulting or...
Go ahead.
Adding on more hours for a school resource officer. I don't think this is something that we should probably put in a, a subcommittee, considering how important this is to us all. I think this is a full committee discussion, a regular session.
Having to do that.
Personal opinion on, on that matter.
Do we wanna hold the $13,000, or is that something that when we come up with a number after we figure out what we're doing here, we...
My guess, I think I looked at this once, once before, and it was 20 to 30, but I don't know if we keep that amongst the entire, in all four districts, if it costs the same or maybe a little bit more, and then dividing it into the four different districts, then maybe 13 is enough. I, I think, we need to look into it.
Right, that's what, I, I completely agree, we need to look into it, so the budget...
To be stable until next budget?
I would, I would recommend that we, or I make a motion that we keep the 13 earmarked for now.
And I, I want that this become a new item of business on our regular monthly agenda.
Any other discussion?
Yes, but do we, I, I think we do, but...
Can I ask for a completed motion? You said you moved to keep thousand, $13,000.
So, that is to not eliminate the $8,000 and the $5,000.
So you don't need to make a motion?
Yes.
There's no motion, Wendy.
All right, so we never made a motion?
Don't do anything.
Yeah, okay.
Because you can't direct that what it's set at $13,000 on, so you can just stand pat and we're done.
But I think, is the motion to not reduce the current budget by that amount, in the budget? I think that's perhaps what the motion is.
Why, why do we need to make, just...
No, I think he's right, we didn't make the motion.
We didn't make the motion.
We don't have to.
We don't, the money's there.
Yeah, right.
So we're keeping it in the budget?
Yeah, motion.
Okay, all right.
I withdraw my motion.
Get your rights around.
Thanks, that made it a lot easier. With President.
Do we wanna talk about the bookkeeper you had just...
Well, I felt like it was, you know, it was on the last, last time, I kind of got swept over at the end.
Yeah.
You know, I, you know, I, I'm just looking at this, and, you know, we, we have 100, when did we get to? 291,000, something like that, last time? You know, and I, I, I hear you, I'm here for the same reason, we're all here, which is to provide best education for our students, but we need to support the budget for towns to support. So when I looked at that 291, you know, when the, the sort of request was 400, it seemed to me we should at least get it to 300. So I was hoping we could find some other amount that we could, you know, that we could cut, and if this is something that, you know, that the administration is putting on the table, the bookkeeper position, then I would be willing to support the elimination of that position.
I think I feel similar.
So, you want me to make a motion, or?
You have to.
I'll make a motion to eliminate the Point 6 bookkeeper position, which is a shared cost position, which would be a reduction of $14,000 for the Silver Lake budget.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Is there any further budget discussion? Anything else anybody wants to throw in? Go ahead.
I have one thing that I, I think we talked a little bit about it last time, and I just wanted to ask about it again. I know there was some discussion about the, the Chromebook warranty that's in the regular budget, and I, what I understood was that that warranty we would pay out, and then we would get that back from parents paying for it. So I was just trying to think of, you know, it just seems like we should be able to borrow this from somewhere, rather than taking it out of the budget. And I, I wish that I could think of a way to, to find another funding source for that, given that it's gonna, I don't know if it's technically revolving, because I don't know that I understand the exact definition of that, but we'd be getting that money back over time, is that right?
To pay towards the bond.
So, you know, if, if, I just, you know, I don't, I don't know, but that was just something that, to me, last time, it seemed like there should be some other way...
Oh, not a subtract.
To fund that. And I, I don't know enough about all those funding sources and how they work, but that was just something I was thinking about.
I asked a question after the meeting last time, and I guess it was explained, and maybe we can clarify that, because the Student Activities Fund, which is a revolving fund already established, would probably be the mechanics used for going forward with that payment of the parent warranty into that fund, and then that would turn around and go back out. So, if that's part, we have a revolving fund subcommittee, I think, still. I think that's probably where this would fall in the committee discussion, how the mechanics of that would work, but for the most part, if the parents take part in the four-year warranty, you're gonna find all that money back in the, in the Activity Fund. So, whether or not there's gonna be enough of a deficit in the Activity Fund for that discussion, I think that would leave that to the subcommittee to discuss it. It makes a lot of sense, in my opinion, to go forward with the warranty that comes from the company, just on the postage, just mailing these things back and forth. We're now taking out on another budget line, I think.
No, and I wasn't suggesting that we not do it, because I think it's a, I think it makes a lot of sense. I just, it seemed like a different kind of budget, I know, to me, and I just wanted to think a little bit more about...
Yeah, I mean, in theory, over time, it's a, it's a wash. It's a timing issue. Hopefully, it is, anyway.
Mark, could I just ask a question on the piece you were mentioning, the student activity piece?
Yeah.
The student activities are aside from all of our funding, all of our budgets, they're standalone for students, by the students. But is it, if it's maybe the revolving piece, is that what you tried to...
Right, so some revolving fund exists, I assume would be used to collect the money from the, from the parents, which is normally done on other...
And then you choose new coverage.
Right, and then you'd make a withdrawal from that fund.
So it would be a wash, close to a wash.
Right, but I mean, some revolving fund has to, you collect money from parents for other things, and I'm not sure exactly where, but you've gotta have a fund somewhere. And any revolving fund then falls under a subcommittee to decide how much those are funded at and where they're at.
Right, I just wanted to make sure that I understood just a little bit.
That's why I leave it.
So having said that, does that have a, does that impact on the budget?
The way it's structured right now, it will be impacting the FY '19 budget, because we have, we, the intent is to purchase that in the budget.
Right, right.
It sounds to me like going forward, each year, as the funds are coming in from parents to pay for that, that would be covering each New Year's.
Right.
So next year, we will be paying the 90,000, paying just the 68,000, or whatever the dollar amount was.
But that would be a line item in the budget every year, which is how funding source to cover it, or would it be in a separate place?
We could, do either, that we could have a separate funding source, or we could have that aside and just pay for the coverage out of that revolving account.
If we pay for, oh, I apologize. Let, let me just make sure I understand, if we went down the road, and it's a very interesting road, it's an interesting option, we went down that road, then that takes the amount that we're paying out of this year's budget, it doesn't take it out of the budget?
For, not for '19, but for '20, that amount each year would be less.
Right. So let's talk about the budget that we have in front of us right now. If we went down the road of utilizing a revolving account that puts whatever that dollar amount is back into the budget. Correct.
The funding would come back into the budget, is that what, to offset the cost?
Well, if, if the funding came out of a revolving account, then the funding would have to go back into the revolving account.
Correct, you'd be doing both pieces out of that, collecting money and paying it.
Right, right now...
Something uncertain was, we just don't know what that's gonna look like for next year, so that's what was built into...
Because people might not pay it all at once in one year, and not anybody can afford it, and maybe have no idea how many pizza...
Right.
So leaving it next year, it's having better information of how that actually works, and how it can happen.
Okay, so, and then you're talking about just leaving it the way it is now, because we have certain...
For '19.
Okay.
Unless there's another, a better, a better...
I don't, I don't know that, I've had one, I just sort of wondered about that.
No, I, I can...
It just seemed like a very different kind of new thing in the budget.
It shouldn't float in the budget like that, it shouldn't be anything out and in, really, I know what you're saying. Oh, no, it, it's, I mean, any idea, like I said, throw it out there, up against the wall, and if it sticks, that's great. Alrighty, folks, where does that leave us then?
You have a chance. Interest from the finance committee's attendant, I have two hands over there, just wanna bring them two.
Thank you, because I, I didn't...
You weren't paying attention.
Do you wanna go first?
Sure. Hi, everyone. Gordon Andrews from the Halifax Finance Committee. So, from the numbers from tonight, if the $14,000 goes through, the total increase would be $790,818. It would be a 5.2% increase to the total town's assessment. So, looking at the number for Halifax, I don't think the finance committee is going to support the number for the assessment at this point in time, just because of where we are in our budget. So I don't wanna bring that to everyone's attention.
Okay, thank you for that.
I have, I have a question.
Oh, my God, I'm sorry, I...
I'm hiding in the corner, it's quite all right. Bill McQuaid, also Halifax Finance Committee, I just have a question on the Chromebooks. What, what does that warranty cover? Is it like a bumper-to-bumper warranty, or the parts, the software?
It's all encompassing, and the warranty covers replacements, for damaged Chromebooks, stolen Chromebooks. And what it enables our tech department to do is, if the Chromebook isn't working, the student can bring it, so they get shipped off right away, and a new one comes in its place, whereas right now, we're, our guys are trying to repair them and keep up with those fixes, and the students sometimes go days or weeks without having their device access to them, what they need in their classrooms.
Okay, thank you. So, so I think it was like maybe a month ago, where we had a bunch of students in here doing the robotics, cool stuff. Now, I understand that this is a vocational school, but have we looked at, or have we considered a relationship with a vocational school that has a technical program such as this, so we could offset the cost and also teach, teach the kids as well? And if so, how about, what was the decision there?
Can I just make a comment on this? I, I work with some kids who are in those programs, and they would not be able to do this. They would not be able to do repairs for Chromebook. And I've worked with kids who are in that program. It's just not something that you could do. College or a technical program like after high school, potentially, but... But they would have to, like, have an entire program on how to repair a Chromebook. And they just don't. It's a good idea, it's a great thought, but your school.
I don't. Their school. A local vocational school is not equipped to be able to do that. Our curriculum does not sit with fixing Chromebooks.
No.
And so that's not just an option.
They're, they're doing network stuff, they're doing other things, but repairing, they're doing.
They're doing learning.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, it would be great if they could. And there, there are, you know, programs that are post-high school that could potentially do things like that. But, you know, that would be, that would be a big investment on their part, and they would be doing it for free, you know.
So have we actually, I'm sorry, so have we actually reached out to vocational schools to see if this is a skill set, or no?
Public.
I'm the assistant principal at the local vocational school, and I can tell you, my students are not equipped in this program to do that. Mr. Crowe is right, we do networking, we do a whole bunch of other stuff. We would not be sitting there all day fixing Chromebooks. It's not good for my students, it's not good for their career, or their life. Now I'm putting my Silver Lake hat back on. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, folks. Any other?
It was a good question, though, I mean, you know, we have to look at everything.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move the budget as amended with the fourteen thousand dollar reduction, if the union agrees.
Any other discussion?
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Alrighty, thank you.
So I just wanted to update you a little bit on our safety presentation, and I wanted to thank both Jason and Michaela for their presentation this evening on the actual Alice presentation. And I have a wonderful, that's involved in the budget here, is note that I just wanted to share with you that we received after the middle school Alice training. Dear Mr. DePio and Mr. Canetta, my daughter Olivia is a student at your school. She is on seven-two. I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for how you have worked with your students concerning the Alice training. We all know that it is a heartbreaking reality that we have to go there with our students, but we do. However, Olivia has been coming home and able to discuss with me confidently what you and all her teachers on seven-two have taught her, empowered her work. I thank you and all her teachers for this. All my gratitude, Kathy Bowleson. She said I was able to share that with you. I just thought it was wonderful that Karen would take the time to write that. So, I did wanna let you know that we are receiving positive comments with that. To answer the question, we do meet monthly with all of our local law enforcement. It's called a community of concern meeting. We also just had a larger meeting on Monday, on the snow day, or whatever that day was, Sunday, that with sort of a mini-summit to look, talk about our emergency protocols again. Also, the superintendent's group, it's called the Lighthouse Group. We move around to different districts, and Silver Lake is hosting in March. And we're actually inviting all the local police chiefs also, and it's gonna be a mini-summit, and we're hosting it here. So I'm actually really excited about that. There's gonna be about a dozen police chiefs that will be here with us at that meeting. And part of what we wanna talk about is sort of what I guess Erica's talking about, is what are all the local recommendations? How are all the schools handling some of these issues, some of the parent concern, and to make sure that we're all on the same page. We also are really working to make sure that the fire departments are more actively involved in some of our Alice trainings. Again, the fire departments will be the ones who will be on the scenes to help deal if, God forbid, anything happens, and they're the ones who will be responsible for the rescue. So, we have a gentleman who is on the Kingston Elementary School Committee, and he has just been certified to be a trainer for Stop the Bleed, which is a way for us to be able to do some first aid within the building. And he will be able to hopefully train, to offer training for free to our teachers. So we're really excited about that. Just sent us a note, we made a note yesterday on that. So that was some excellent new news for us. The other thing I did wanna mention is, our students have gotten incredibly good at fire drills. It's muscle memory. They don't think. They just, you know, they hear the bell, they know what to do, they get up, they go. That's our goal with Alice, is that it will become muscle memory. I hate that I even have to say that, but I want our students to feel so confident and to feel so empowered, as this parent had said, that it will be like muscle memory. That if we say evacuate, they know, they put their hands up, they know where to go outside, they know how to handle it. We say barricade, they know what the process will be. We have worked really hard, it is a progression. We can always get better at everything. But we have worked really hard to give our teachers the skills, and we are working to give our students the skills. But it is a process. So, we're continuing to do our Alice trainings. We have the high school tomorrow, and we have, you know, the student presentations, the evacuations, and then the barricade process. And we're doing the same processes at the elementary school. We're just moving into the barricade part of the drills. That is new to us. You know, we did it at the middle school, the option. We're doing it at the high school tomorrow, and we're hoping to do it at the elementary school a little bit later into the spring. So it is a progression, but I want you to know how serious and how invested all of your administrators are, and all of the, the teaching staff is to keep all of our students in the community safe. I don't know if anybody had any questions on our safety presentation. Again, I wish I didn't have to even talk about it.
Quick question about that, but also related to the, to the walkout next week? Next week? So, that's gonna be potentially over a thousand kids standing outside? Are the local police gonna be involved? Okay.
So we actually met with them and discussed it, and they're barric, they're blocking off all the entrances, so no cars could come in to the parking lot. The students are only going to go out front for the circle, and they will just be standing there, so it'll be a very controlled setting. We also will be having an activity in the cafeteria, I believe, where students who do not wish to go outside, but wish to try to do something to recognize the students, they'll have a quiet space where they can go in, write letters, make cards, whatever they wish to do, sort of a quiet, more reflective time to do it. Also, again, students who do not wish to, do not have to participate. They, you know, they, they will stay in the classrooms, and, you know, again, it's a seventeen-minute. But the local police are, are, will be protecting our students who wish to go outside and have that seventeen minutes recognized.
Perfect, thank you.
So the classroom teaching process will go on hold for the period of time? Or the, the kids, if you do have a population of kids that are staying?
I think it's gonna be more sort of catch-up time for the kids. I don't think it's gonna be any new, new information's gonna be taught.
Okay.
For that ten minutes. Yeah, and again, there will be no punishment either way, whether the students choose to attend or choose not to attend. There will be no discipline, it's not, you know, any sort of a, of a walkout. This is student-led, it's student-led across the country. I was really impressed with our students, you know, that spoke. I thought they were very well-spoken, I think they've been very thoughtful. You know, I think it will be the unusual school that will not participate, from, from everything that I'm hearing, on some level. I think everybody's doing it differently, but I do think there's, there's gonna be recognition on, at least on the high school level.
Yeah.
I apologize.
Maureen, more clear?
Joy, I wondered if you could tell us, I wanted the public to be aware that this program that was put in place, the presentations were done well before the incident in Florida, were they not? They were planned before, we're not reacting to this, this was planned.
That's a great point, thank you, Maureen, thank you.
That it's important to note that.
Well in advance, months prior.
Yeah, it takes a while.
It's just an awful coincidence that it.
It really is, unfortunately, that's, that's what happened, but we had this well in advance.
Right, it takes quite a while, I, I don't remember who mentioned it, and I apologize, but someone mentioned, it does take resources to plan these drills. You know, mind you, while we're doing these drills, we have a lot of the local police, you know, at our buildings. You know, we have the police chiefs, we have the, you know, police officers, we have the fire chiefs. You know, people are there, so that, you know, we're really making use of the town's resources. So the towns really have to plan, you know, obviously, if an emergency comes, they, they may not stay, but, you know, they have to plan this out, they have to make sure that they're available to do this, so.
Another part of my question or inquiry here was that I think it's wonderful that we're giving safety skills to our students and our teachers, and I understand that the police and the local fire departments are involved. I have a concern about parents, coaches, and in-school volunteers. We also, as you mentioned, are gonna be doing this hopefully at the elementary schools. The line of parents picking up students, when I came by the school today, went all the way to Lake Street before it came into the building. I wonder if the school has thought, as Ma generously says, this is a central place for locations, for our communities to meet, if a presentation shouldn't be put on here and offered to parents, coaches, and other volunteers that come into our buildings, that would possibly completely react, who knows how anyone is gonna react in a case like this? But if we've got a group of students and staff that know what to do, and a group of parents that completely panic, coaches, whatever they are, or a line of cars trying to pick up people and just see kids running around, what, what's our reaction to that? And have, has the administration talked to the police or fire about possibly putting on a public presentation?
We haven't had that exact conversation, but what I will say is, one of the beauties of the Alice program is that it is something that can be adapted to any public venue. So I think certainly we could have a conversation with our local authorities and adapt something into it as part of our Laker lecture series, for example. You know, not just to parents, but to, you know.
Well, I think it's important to committing members as well. I mean, we're talking at U-Boarder dot Michaela, it's for any venue. We hear about shootings at a mall, we hear about them at local McDonald's, we hear about them at banks, the library. You know, this is a, this is a tool that we should be offering to everybody in our communities. That's what we do, is teach. That's what we should be doing, is teaching everybody.
Thank you.
From that, some great news. I'd like to congratulate our new official principal, official, she has been official a year, but official, no longer interim principal, Michaela Gill. When Jim O'Katy left rather suddenly, we appointed Michaela as the interim. She immediately has just been phenomenal, truly. She came up with the motto, "All in every day." We all feel it, the mood in the building is very upbeat. She's incredibly optimistic. I don't know how she goes from morning to night, she never is tired, she always is smiling. And she has just really provided a wonderful uplifting culture to the building. She's bought into Laker lecture series. She has built on a wonderful foundation that our previous administration has had, and she's really just continued to fly with it. I'm absolutely thrilled, I thoroughly enjoyed working with her, and I'm just very tickled that she's willing to be our principal. So, I just wanted to make that official announcement today. I did send you an email a little earlier today, and I sent it out to staff, and I received, and I'm sure you received it, many more. But I can't tell you how many people, and it's probably the only thing I've done since I've been superintendent, that everybody has been one-hundred percent in agreement I made a good decision, so.
I'll do the last one.
Yeah, and it will probably be like one and only, so let me just savor that moment for a minute. So, but everybody was thrilled, so I'm just absolutely thrilled. She's been fantastic, and I, I look forward to working with her for many more years.
That's right, thank you all very much for your support, I appreciate it.
Thank you. You've been, I'll speak for myself as one of the school committee member. You did a lovely job just now of, of expressing what a positive impact we've had. When Jim was leaving, I thought, oh, God, it's just such big shoes to fill. You filled those shoes and then turned them into army boots. I mean, you've been up and, and about anything that I personally could have imagined as, you know, somebody stepping into that role. You've been just phenomenal, and thank you so much for
Thank you.
the, the energy you bring to it, and you certainly were the, the wonderful, wonderful fit for high school principal.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
And that's all I had.
Get it forward, Charlie, thank you.
I think this might have been from an older file, because this still has music cap rip on it.
Was it, I did you could ruin it?
But we, we did update it, because I did see one where it was switched.
Do you wanna do that?
I will update it again and correct that now.
I don't know, we're gonna get into the reports. Just wondering if we can do the capital plan for the finance committee folks in the home.
Sure.
Don't need to stay.
Yep, you wanna take that out of order? Perfect.
Can we do that?
Yep.
You wanna chime in on that?
Yes, please, Maureen.
Madam Chair. So we, we had a facilities discussion, and just before this meeting, and we due the capital plan that had been presented, I think several copies of this has been out. We made some amendments, recommendations to the full committee in lengthy discussion. Couple of members on our committee have been in support of one of the line items on this item, and have been asked to recuse themselves from discussion on that because they're, they're involved with the community organization to help fund one of these items. So that's the ceraco lighting item, line item. We reviewed the line item by line item in our meeting, spending thirty-five, forty minutes of discussion for most of our meeting. And we made two amendments to what you have in front of you. We reduced the admin building architectural study to twenty-five thousand. Most of that discussion involved around that even range. And we were trying to be conservative on that study. We did discuss removing it altogether, but realized that we have to address this issue in some way to move this forward. And the architectural study will put some numbers in what our options are for us to move forward. By just letting this continue to fester and move on, we're not getting anywhere with the admin building. So, and I don't know, Madam Chair, if we wanna go line item. I'm just gonna share with you what we did at the facility side. After the lengthy discussion on the lighting discussion item, we elected to reduce the hundred and fifty thousand to a hundred thousand, being Silver Lake's donation to this cost. There was some discussion about the fact that the advertising opportunities on the four poles that were proposed may provide revenue sources. Nobody feels comfortable putting any line of money up front until it's matched by the community. And there was some discussion about the fact that they may be able to find a better price, even though I've seen several estimates that still put this in a three-hundred-thousand-dollar range. So, other than that, everything is seasoned there, so we had a reduction in fifty-five thousand dollars over what you're looking at. I don't know what that number is.
We brought it down to four hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that number, Jason?
We brought it to four hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Each item was discussed at length, and, and nobody felt that there was any way to move on, on the items that we've been moving. We need to move this forward, so. We bring to you this as our recommendation from the facilities committee. For the sake of discussion, you want a motion?
Sure, that'd be great.
So, we'd like to move that with the amendments mentioned to four hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars, as, as discussed.
Second for discussion.
I'll second for discussion.
Any other question? Now we can talk.
Maureen and I have to recuse ourselves, so since we're not separating it out, we can't vote at all on this, correct? Since we're done.
I see it all.
So you are still participating.
I think, would you like us, we can move, we can move that line item, and then we can.
If you can do that, then I think Maureen and I can vote on the other stuff, just not.
That's correct, Christine checked out the force.
Okay, so.
So if you do ceraco first, we'll recuse ourselves.
That's correct, Christine.
I got you.
Withdraw my motion.
I guess with a second.
Can I, I apologize, just for clarification, so, we, reducing the lighting.
To one, to a total of one hundred thousand from Silver Lake.
Okay.
And we're reducing administration building phase one with study
Yep.
to twenty-five thousand. All other nine items remain the same. But if I can withdraw my motion with a second's permission, I would like to move the, to replace ceraco lighting portion of the capital budget. replace Syracuse lighting portion of the capital budget to $100,000. Get a second for that.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Then I'd like to go forward and move the rest of the remaining line items as presented.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed, abstained? Thank you. Thank you for that.
Thanks for keeping us out of jail.
I apologize, can I just ask, did you actually say $100,000 to be back in here?
It's 100,000 only then, or not 150?
Yeah, okay, all right, yeah, I'm sorry. I just lost track of the votes, I must have spaced out. Okay, new business? Seeing none, old business, frequency of meetings, I don't know if you can talk about that one right now. Yep. Silver Lake Irritation Association.
All right, I'm Kim Orpette, National Leadership Committee. I want to speak a little bit about the Alice training and the recent events and the effect that it has on the teachers. And I want to thank the committee for doing its best to support the teachers, and understanding that when events like the massacre of Florida happened, that your teachers carry this with them everywhere. We had conversations about resource officers and getting armed people into the building, but time and again, experience shows that your first line of defense are your teachers. It's your teachers who are putting themselves in the line of the students, it's your teachers who are not trained, who are working with their kids, figure out how to build a barricade to keep them safe. So we want to thank you for understanding that as you vote in the budget, and as you look at the things that you need to cut and you make difficult decisions, that you are remembering that it is your teachers who are here for your students. And I want to assure the community and the parents that we carry your kids with you wherever we go. We have lost sleep over the past few weeks, and while we say like, you know, the recent events of Florida, it's not just recent, this is something that we have carried with us, I know since I was young, since 1999, I can remember the day of Columbine. This is not new to us. I understand that right now it is a hot topic issue in politics, but please know that this is something that your teachers think of, and that we literally are preparing ourselves to protect your children. So as you're looking at the budget, and you're understanding percentages, and dollars, and finances, please know that your money is going to protect your students, not only with the finest education that can be offered, but also with the love and care that these teachers offer to these students. And you can feel the community here, you know that we're everywhere. The teachers are at every event, and our number one priority is to ensure that our kids are safe. So again, I know that budget's hard, I know that it is never easy to make the cuts, and there's never a right answer, but we are so thankful that you are looking at the fact that your teachers are what makes this school special, and safe, and powerful. And by empowering us as teachers and educators, we can empower our students to make smart, healthy decisions, and make sure that they feel like they know that they are safe in this school. So I would just, as we're making those decisions at town meetings, try not to just think of figures and numbers and increases on a tax bill, because I feel it too. I live in Halifax, I understand. But also understand that we're not just burdened with education, but we are your security to your children, and we take that very seriously. I think that was highlighted in Parkland, and I think it's highlighted in every single act of school violence. It is your teachers who provide the safety for the students first. We are there first, we sacrifice ourselves first. I understand budgets are tight, but please, do what you can to protect the teachers who are protecting your children. So again, I do thank the school committee. I understand the sacrifices that you guys are making, and the numbers that you're juggling to try and make it work that you protect the positions of these schools, and we thank you for that, and we hope that the towns understand that we are there for their children. But we need to make sure that we are protecting our educators, because the more protected we are, the more protected our students and our community is. So thank you for making those decisions.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Thanks, it was very well said. Administrative review. All the copies into Lisa?
Yes.
Okay, March 28th, Lisa, you had sent out an email, I think, last week, maybe before?
Yes.
Okay, that should prompt everybody, everybody on the committee, take the time, fill out the evaluation, it's so important, and Joy brings a lot to the table and deserves some feedback from us, so I appreciate that. CTE?
No meeting.
Chairman's correspondence, Charlie was the correspondence, I had the folks do up copies of that, you didn't hear from him. Legislative agents report.
Division three of MASC is hosting the modern-day school resource officer down in Plymouth next Thursday night. It's free to all MASC members, it's at Plymouth South, like dinner will be served by their culinary students. I was involved in planning that, and of course, this was also prior to what just recently happened in our country. But again, it's going to emphasize the educational role, but also the safety role community-wide for having officers in the school, and having that be the first relationship our kids have with officers, not when they're getting pulled over for the first time or getting in trouble.
Did you say that was six o'clock, Jason?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, okay.
You can sign up right on the MASC website.
It was on MASC, and it also came home in the mail.
So, we have plenty of room, unfortunately, we don't have that many seats filled up yet. I think last time I had a head count, it was about 21 people.
Oh, for god's sakes.
Free food, I'll be there.
Can other people come besides?
We'd like to have it be building principals, school administrators, school resource officers, and school committee members.
Thank you for that idea. Six o'clock's a little tough, they're starting a little bit early probably.
I don't think we all need to be there, but it would be nice to have a few of you guys there.
Yeah, no, it's so topical right now, so agreed. Anything else? Oh, go ahead, Lauren.
Well, just because this is an MASC-related question, so I guess this is a place to ask it, but I feel like we get a lot of mail from MASC, and I don't know whether there's been discussion with MASC about going paperless, because I'm actually horrified by the amount of mail that I receive that has a 47 cent stamp on it, or postmark, so I don't, I don't know. I haven't been too involved in MASC, but I don't know, Jason, do you have any insight as to whether that's sort of been discussed with the...
It's been brought up.
...organization? I'm really shocked at how much mail I get.
To let you know that we have many people who are members of school committees throughout the Commonwealth, who are not very fond of receiving things electronically, and they prefer that reminder in the mail, and it is something that the younger generation of school committee members has brought up, but we haven't made too much movement on that. If you knew Mr. Creed, if you had a chance...
I know him well, but I know enough to know.
He has many friends still at MASC, and there's many individuals who still believe that that reminder in the mail is crucial and important, so I will bring it back to the board.
I'll have one without depth if I could, just to get them electronic. Well, I have to say that I appreciate the reminders from them, and I try to get on, I have the MASC website up often, and it is duplicated, the information they send us in the mail, I get like the next day after I read it. But I guess I'm more like Mr. Creed than I thought, because I'd like to have something in my hand, and if the school does decide to go paperless, I would still request that I could pick up my documents prior to the meeting, because I like to read through everything, not necessarily on a phone, and because I have terrible internet service at my home, I need it.
But I will bring, I will bring your comments to see if we can have an off-duty message.
Yeah, well, just, I just wondered, being sort of new to all of this, that's one thing that I've been very surprised by, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Second, negotiations.
No report.
PAC?
Actually, Joy gave the report on PAC when she talked to the director. We are focusing on tuition in or out of district, in our members. We're reviewing it because it has come up in the past, and we're not sure which we were going to go with it.
I would imagine the potential there is, and it makes sense to a large degree, remember communities having a discount, but you probably need to make that up someplace, so you're moving it for one to...
Well, we pay a lot of rent, so we pay it to some of the districts that we actually pay us tuition. So if we decrease tuition, but our rent stays the same, you know, it's almost like a circle.
Yeah.
So that's what we're running into. I mean, we rent from our schools, our schools send the children to PAC and pay a tuition, so the line's just sort of going around and around.
Yeah, you're just handing it back and forth, yeah. Okay, policy.
Can I make a motion?
Yes, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the following policies: ACB, EB, BEA, EAE, GBGE, GBGF, IK, JII, JJH-R, JLCC, JLCD, JQ, KDBA, KCD, KE, KHB, LDA. Do I have a second?
I'll second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Do we need a motion to waive the actual reading?
It was a second reading already.
I know.
But we, yeah...
We can do it after you did it, you don't have to redo it, Mark.
You did a lovely job with it, though.
I still have to do the deleted policies.
I will make a motion to accept Mark's reading of the policy names in lieu of the actual reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained.
I do. Somebody make a motion that we don't read the deleted policies, please?
I'll make a motion that we do not read the deleted policies from the main event to read them, or might just make a motion that we don't read it.
Waive the reading.
That we waive the reading.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained.
And I'm making a motion that we delete the policies based on the MASC recommendations for DJG, IH-E, IJJ, IJM, JBA, JICG, JRA-R.
Second. All those in favor?
Discussion?
I would just amend that it's IH-A-E, you said IH-E.
Oh, sorry.
You missed the A.
I think I just heard somebody volunteer to be on policy when I read.
God, we couldn't have too much more to go through.
Second motion, second.
You get, Jason?
I'm just voting yes.
Oh, all right, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Abstained.
God love you.
Okay, revolving funds, I think we talked about having a meeting on, did we talk about having revolving funds meeting?
No, I thought we had.
Okay, there's no meeting, so we're... Safer?
We, you want to do it? So we did the discussion on the capital plan, thank you very much, everybody, for your support of our recommendations. I have a list of storm damage to the school, just to keep everybody informed, I'll just go through the list. We have a tree that fell on the side of the roof of the library, the same branch may have flown across the roof and damaged some of the roof items. We had eight trees fall in the parking lots, metal fascia blew off the auditorium, pieces of the auditorium broke windows in the auto shop, baseball dugout was totally leveled, it literally picked the roof up and crumbled the concrete structure, and it's, nothing's higher than 12 inches tall right now. Portable basketball, backstop blew through the fence and was both damaged, two scorekeeper benches were damaged, water went through the windows in several of the classrooms, greenhouse had a panel blow-off. I thought there'd be a lot more damage to that personally. Branch tore the rubber on the treatment plant roof, and 15 to 20 trees fell, or leaning in the area that's going to be used for the cross-country course. And VFD shorted out, the power surge is costing us $62, $97, $6,300 in the heating system. So all that damage has been tallied totaled, there's overtime involved, and Joyce holding on to a tally of that in the event that we have some support from the federal state government to help pave those bills, otherwise she's going to have to figure out budget-wise how to do that. We also have insurance covering quite a bit, too. And the other issue we had from facilities, we made a small report, but we've been investigating the solar canopies for quite some time. The company has been chasing the ever-evolving solar in the state of Massachusetts and what the incentives are going to be, and the latest version that is going to expire that went previous, there's some incentives for various different types of programs. If they were able to complete, which is a very big if, in the first phase of the 18 project, and get the canopies to a point where they could meet the window, in that first phase, once you get to a certain number of megawatts of solar, then it steps down for the incentives. So the goal is to try to make that first one. It depends on how fast other people are building. Even at that point, our revenue source would be between 12 and $20,000 a year. Now, that's a small number, a lot smaller than we thought this was going to come through, but they've done all their math and looked at what it takes to build the actual structures, and that's why it's more expensive. So the industry is supporting 22,000 to 30,000, in some cases, of ground-installed solar, but they don't have complicated structures like canopies to put over the cars. So what he has asked us to do is, if that's not enough money for him to keep forward, they're going to stop doing their research and continuing the project. If we want to continue to pursue it, knowing that we're maybe looking at $12,000 a year, then they'll go through the math and do that. But at this point, we're at a point where we need to make some decision. I look at this as we can make the decision to go forward, we can make the decision not to go forward, or we can make the decision to get some other information that might provide some, other reasons why we'd do this. So this company brings to the table education as part of the package, they can put that in the lease, they bring a certified teacher in that teaches to the STEM program and the STEM classes, introduces the solar, the technology, the output, the math, the installation, the construction, explains all that to our students, so we have education value from that. And that's part of the way that they qualify to be able to put these on schools particularly is because they are providing some education value to the student body. The other thing it does is set an example for our students to look at green energy as an alternative, they consider that as a career, and to be embraced with that every day when they park their car underneath a canopy. The canopies also have some benefit to the snow sliding off the canopy in the middle of the driveway where it can be removed, as opposed to having to plow each individual parking spot. So it's basically, we're getting some advantage out of it without, and we're getting a very small amount of revenue, which I consider smaller than expected. So I leave it to the full committee, Safer Committee did not have a particular recommendation before or not. I can go back and have one of their representatives come to the April meeting, perhaps, to give us some of the data they have on snow removal and some of the other things, how their canopies may benefit the schools, and maybe explain that education aspect more, because I really don't know the details. That would be what I would suggest. They don't need a decision right now, but they wanted us to be aware of what the revenue base is right now.
Right, right. Lauren, you had other points?
Yeah, surprisingly, Mark was reading my mind again. I was going to ask that, would it be possible to have solar come and give the full school committee a presentation? I still have some unanswered questions. I'm worried about the revenue, I thought it would be more than that, and I'm concerned as to how it's going to look out there in 15 or 20 years, and the aesthetics of Silver Lake is important to me, as I know it is to many people. We've spent a lot of money on what we put in here, and I just want the return to be worthwhile to all of us.
The wastewater treatment plant updates that we're still waiting on the plots.
Yeah, I didn't think we needed to know all that, but that's what...
That we are going to review all of the fees, student grounds, and facilities. Laura and I are going to work together to get some information from surrounding districts before we just say, let's raise fifty dollars for pot fees. We want to see where we are in conjunction with other things. We're going to keep the administrative building options on our agenda probably perpetually, but we're going to keep it there and try to keep it in everybody's mind that something needs to be done at some point. So we're not going to have an April meeting. Hopefully, we'll have a meeting in May, and thank you, Mark, for the solar report.
Thank you. School staff times?
No meeting.
Treasures report.
So there was twelve regular warrants circulating in the table today for a total of eight-hundred-seventy-five-thousand-two-hundred-seventy-five dollars and forty-seven cents. There was two payroll warrants circulating for a total of one-million-five-hundred-fifty-four-thousand-nine-hundred-fifty-five dollars and ninety-six cents. And I also have the motions for our budget.
Madam Chair? Wonderful.
All right.
I make the motion that the Silver Lake Regional School Committee approve twenty-five-million-two-hundred-thirty-four-thousand-eight-hundred-ninety-eight dollars for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen operation budget, as the amount deemed necessary for the operation of the regional school in the Silver Lake District for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen fiscal year.
Second. All those in favor?
I have a question.
Sure.
That's the new number, right?
Correct.
Thank you. Approved.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, it carries.
I make a motion that the Silver Lake Regional School Committee approve the use of one-hundred-thousand dollars for the lights on Syracuse Field, three-hundred-ninety-thousand-eight-hundred-seventy-eight dollars for the remaining lines, for a total of four-hundred-ninety-thousand-eight-hundred-seventy-eight dollars of END funds to fund the two thousand eighteen, nineteen fiscal year capital plan.
Second. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Very good, thank you.
I make a motion that the Silver Lake Regional School Committee approve the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen construction budget of one-million-five-hundred-three-thousand-sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents, as the amount deemed necessary for the construction costs for the regional schools in the Silver Lake District for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen fiscal year.
Second. All those in favor?
I have a question.
Sure.
That's the new number, right?
Correct.
Thank you. Approved.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, it carries.
I make a motion that the Silver Lake Regional School Committee approve the use of one-hundred-thousand dollars for the lights on Syracuse Field, three-hundred-ninety-thousand-eight-hundred-seventy-eight dollars for the remaining lines, for a total of four-hundred-ninety-thousand-eight-hundred-seventy-eight dollars of END funds to fund the two thousand eighteen, nineteen fiscal year capital plan.
Second. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Abstained, very good, thank you.
I make a motion that the Silver Lake Regional School Committee approve the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen construction budget of one-million-five-hundred-three-thousand-sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents, as the amount deemed necessary for the construction costs for the regional schools in the Silver Lake District for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen fiscal year.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Unit thirty-one, no meeting. Okay, future dates, March twenty-second, early release, March thirtieth, Good Friday in school. April twelfth, school choice, our next school committee meeting, we'll have school choice public hearing. And our next meeting is in the Middle School. Eric, I won't be there that night. Thank you. And we have no need for executive session tonight.
Second present, thank you.
It's been postponed to April, for scheduling reasons besides ours, and it wasn't prepared, so. Motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Abstained? Opposed? Anybody opposed? What's your opinion?